Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order for this Monday, April 19th at 6:00. And I do welcome the people that are here, the citizens that are here. You're welcome to come back anytime you would like to sit and through a county commissioner meeting. Or if you're here for public comments, you're welcome back anytime to give comments to our commissioners about what's on your mind for Stanley County. Before we open up, there's a public comment sign-up sheet. And I'm looking at that, and I believe most of the public comments that are on here are regarding item number six, which is the cell tower issue out on McCluster Road. So we're going to have a public hearing. So if you signed up for that, when I open the public hearing would be a time that you would come to speak. So if you're on that list for that purpose, just hold your comments until that time. At this time, I do want to call on Commissioner Eifert, who's going to give us an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come to you, Lord, seeking strength and wisdom for the decisions we make tonight. Lord, I continue to pray for this county and everyone in it. Lord, I pray for our police, our fire, our medics, that you'll just keep them safe. Lord, I pray especially for our healthcare workers, our frontline workers, everyone in the medical field, Lord, that is struggling with this COVID epidemic. Lord, I continue to pray for those who have lost loved ones, Lord, that who are suffering loss. I pray for those who have been sick or in hospitals, that you'll just lift them up, be with them, Lord, and strengthen them daily. I continue to thank you for this county. I thank you for the employees of this county. And I pray that you give us strength, and everything that is said and done be your will. These things we ask in your precious name that we pray. Amen. If y'all would stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the commissioners have looked over the agenda. Are there going to be adjustments or approval for the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we add the proclamation for a proxy awareness day to our agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to add a proclamation for a proxy awareness to the agenda, which we will add it to, we'll make it item number... number 11. And move the consent agenda to item 12. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have at this time, public comments. And as I said earlier, the public comments are for any item that you'd like to talk about other than the cell tower issue. Is there anyone here that signed up that would like to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we'll have a public hearing in a minute, and those that did sign up will be able to speak. The next item on the agenda is reappointment to Central Lina COG Region F Aging Advisory Committee. And presenter is Becky Wehmoff, Senior Service Director, who will be retiring very soon. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to ask for your approval for two reappointments to the Region F Aging Advisory Council. Of the nine counties that are in the Central Lina Region F area, every county has four, actually three delegates and a vacant, and a alternate. So they have four people representing each county in the non-county regions. Believe it or not, of the non-counties, only three counties have every delegate position filled, and Stanley is one of them. The other six counties have a vacancy or two. So I think that speaks highly of Stanley County. But two of the delegates that we, that are representing Stanley County have terms that are expiring at the end of June. One of them is Nicole Ashton. She was appointed last year to fill an unexpired term, and she is, I'm asking that she be reappointed for a two-year term, with the term ending, I think, June 30th, 2023. The other one is an alternate, Roger Udi. As an alternate, his term has to be reappointed every year, and he only serves for one year. So I'm also asking that Roger Udi be reappointed as a, as a alternate on the region, on Stanley's Region F Aging Advisory Board. And again, we've got a strong, good group of people right now representing Stanley County, and so I'm real proud of that.
Does anyone have questions of Ms. Wehmoff? What's the pleasure, the board?
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion that we, I request that Nicole Ashton be reappointed as a delegate to the RFAAC for two-year term, ending June 30, 2023, and that Roger Udi be reappointed as the alternate to a one-year term, ending June 30, 2022.
Okay, we have a first by Vice Chairman Jordan, and a second by Commissioner Alman. Any other discussion? All in favor of these two appointments, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky, and enjoy your retirement soon to come. Item number three is uncollectible utility debts. And presenter is Carol Alman, Central Permitting Customer Service Supervisor.
Thank you for letting, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I come before you to ask for permission to write off inactive accounts that has not been collected. And the state does not allow us, under the statute, to collect any money due three years or older. So the whole total is $220,346.06.
Carol? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Farr.
I would like to ask, where is the majority of this uncollected come from?
I broke it down, and deceased, and broke it out from Piney Point, Greater Baden, and then the Stanley County. And then I broke it out to where it's just, where people just didn't pay, and they left and left huge amounts owed.
Does this ever, I'm sorry, but does this ever come back around, kind of like the Howard Company of Albemarle, no matter how long?
No. The statute 152 and 17 will describe the three-year mark.
Ma'am, I've got a question, just because I'm not, well, I actually am on that board now, but I'm new to that board, the Water and Sewer Board, but it would seem to me like $98,000 out of Baden's a lot of debt.
It is.
How does that happen? How do, how do they get in that much debt without us doing something to collect that money or cut water off?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
One of the reasons Carol's now the supervisor of this unit is, I made a change that you all, I recommended a change last June as part of our budget process. I wasn't satisfied with where we were from a collections perspective. This information's been presented to you in years past, and lots of questions were asked, and I just didn't feel like we got any better. And so I went to Carol and said, would you be willing to take this on? You know, based on what she's been able to do with central permitting and the fact that I don't get complaints from folks who come into central permitting from our customer service perspective. I knew there would be issues and concerns. I actually had some last week about somebody getting their water turned off. But this is how you prevent it, is you get more aggressive in turning folks' water off, and when their water's turned off, they will come in and pay. And we just weren't being consistent in how we were turning folks' water off. And it was, it may go three months, six months, nine months, and it just wouldn't happen. And then folks would be so in arrears that there was no way they would catch up. So Carol has come in and very diligently has gotten the most past due ones up to, and now she's working on those just on a month-to-month basis. The number of calls and the number of accounts that are past due is far less than it was. And so hopefully, in years to come, when you come and present this, we'll see a dwindling amount. But I would agree with you that there, it is excessively high, but it was because I didn't feel like we were doing what, all that we could do to keep it from, and then what that does is puts more pressure on the other ratepayers. Obviously, if you're writing this off and other folks aren't paying, and I think the missed notion out there is that our water and sewer is part of your taxes. It's not. I mean, our water and sewer cannot be part of our taxes. It's, it's, you know, there's our enterprise funds that have to be run almost like a business. You bring in the revenue and to offset your expense, and the revenue is people paying it. So if folks aren't paying, it just puts more pressure on the folks who are paying and forces you to increase rates. So, you know, to your point, yes, it is high, but I believe with Carol now in this position, not quite a year, because we made the transition in late August, early September, you know, I think you're going to see this improve because we're being more aggressive and really, we're doing what we should be doing, and that is cutting folks off as long as we're allowed to. Keep in mind, when COVID happened, the governor, governor restricted that we couldn't turn folks off. Now, what he did say is, you still owe your bill. And we were very clear to folks that, yes, just because you're not getting cut off doesn't mean that you're getting free water or free sewer. You still, you're going to need to pay this at some point. So, and obviously, the state has lots of grants and other things that are being used to help folks pay that back if they've been impacted by COVID. But I hope that answers, maybe answers your question.
It does. Thank you, County Manager Lucas. And thank you, Ms. Carol, for taking on that job, because it sounds like you were walking into a spot that is not a fun place to be.
I have a good team.
Commissioner Eifert, I believe you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Does the county have the ability to put folks on debt set off?
Yes, I am using debt set off. I sure am. I've probably got around $200,000, something thousand dollars to the debt set off.
That's a great tool. Thank you, Carol.
Carol, a question or two. Are any of these that are, understand that they're deceased?
Yeah.
They're not going to pay. Might vote, but won't pay. My question.
Charles, if you get that.
It was Commissioner Eifert that said that. Question, Stanley County Utilities, $78,816 in change. Are any of those businesses?
Probably are. I didn't separate that, I'm sorry. If you would like that information, I'll get it.
And I guess all of them are now 10 years or greater?
They're over three years.
Three years, and there's nothing we can do?
Not that I know of, sir.
Can we small claim any of these folks before they get to three years?
What I'm using is the debt set off, and we do have an online thing that we can probably start using. It's a collections agency. I haven't quite got there yet, but yes. And the active accounts can be controllable, because I can cut the water off. This is something I really can't control. And if they're not going to pay it then, I doubt they'll pay it to collections, but we are going to probably get a hold of them, because I can use a collection agency plus debt set off. I can use both. I did check with the state to make sure that I could.
Keep in mind, these are inactive accounts. These aren't, these aren't.
These are inactive.
Yeah, I can't control them.
Okay. But you got some that are active now that are past due.
But they're getting better, because we did do some payment plans. The governor wanted to at least six months, so we did. And the people that own, that owed a lot of money, a thousand or more, I did stretch it out to 12 months. They are paying, I will say. If they default one time, they have to pay in full.
I'm not going to ask the name, but I know you have an account that is the largest past due customer.
She pays, though.
What's her total?
It's still $6,000.
$6,000.
Yes, sir.
Well, I pay my water bill, and I know the majority of the people in here probably pay their water bill.
Please.
And I appreciate you collecting, but hopefully, we won't get to any more that are going to be charged off.
I have not.
Okay. Any other questions? What's the pleasure, the board?
Mr. Chairman, I request board approval to write off the amounts. Try that again. Mr. Chairman, I request board approval to write off the amounts as uncollectible debt in Stanley County Utilities, Piney Point, Ward District, and Greater Baden Ward and Sewer District for accounting purposes.
We have a first by Vice Chairman Jordan, a second by Commissioner Alman. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Call on Kim Blackwelder from the Elections Director for Stanley County. She wants us to approve the acquiring of new voting systems, EVS 5.2.4.0.
Good evening. I would like to just make one clarification before I begin. In Stanley County, we do not have dead people voting. Just for the record.
Charles, put that in the minutes.
We did actually challenge six deceased voters in the general election, and those ballots were removed, so just for clarification. It is. But I come before you tonight to request the approval for the Board of Elections to purchase a new voting system, the EVS 5.2.4.0. And as I explained in my, in a prior meeting on March the 15th, basically what this is is an upgrade to the software for the physical equipment that we have now. We will be required to purchase a computer system, what they call a management workstation, and that cost is $3,694. We are able to use grant funds for that, so we will not be using any county funds directly for that. We did do a simulated election on April the 6th, and after that simulation where we tested the software, the board did vote to acquire that system, and that has also been approved by the State Board of Elections.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Any questions of Kim?
I think you did say last time that Dimension Software is not being used in either of those.
No, we're using Election System and Software. That's the vendor we've been with since 2006.
What's the pleasure, the board?
Mr. Chairman, making a motion to approve and purchase, to acquire the new voting system, EVS 5.2.4.0.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alman, second by Vice Chairman Jordan. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, Kim. And thank you for the job that you and your staff are doing. Next on the agenda is a new lake patrol boat purchase. And presenter is our sheriff, nope, Ashley Thompson, the chief deputy.
Thank you, gentlemen. What we're looking at is, and I do have a copy for each of you if you'd like it, it has information on it. Would y'all like a copy of? Okay. While you're looking at that, the first copy is a, it's not the boat, but it's the picture of the model, about the markings. It will have a, it's like a 21-foot boat, have a 200 Yamaha. The other boat we have is roughly 20 years old. We have refurbished the motor on it with a gift from somebody on the lake, refurbished it. With due to all the, and that boat is actually bought by Alcoa, the first boat. And we're wanting to move that boat. We got refurbished more on Lake Tillery, because of all the new housing down there. The other boat, Alcoa's prominent, $30,000. It is a $70,000 boat. What we did, we got on the bid with the North Carolina Wildlife, they bought 20 of them, and they bid out 21 of them for us. So we got a pretty good deal. It don't seem like $70,000, but it is a more expensive boat in as to their specs. And the last few sheets you have are the specifications that wildlife uses. Also, they've already given us a $15,000 donation, and they're, we're waiting on another $15,000 donation from Alcoa. The other money that we're trying to switch over tonight is forfeiture money. So we're going to let our drug dealers offset the cost and pay for the boat. So we're not looking at any county money.
Any questions, Chief Deputy? Are you looking for the board to just accept this amendment? No motion required?
We need a motion to accept the amendment, right?
Yeah, you make, by doing the budget amendment, they'll have the authority to finance and do PO and process the payment, yeah.
And the boat will be built in May if we approve it.
Chairman, I happily make the motion that we accept the requested amendment.
Okay. Vice Chairman Jordan, motion to accept it. Second, Commissioner Eifert, any other comments? I can tell you the lake is getting, the Lake Tillery is getting busier and busier and busier, and there's lots of big homes that pay big tax dollars, which is good for all the citizens. So I'm glad that this is happening, because on the weekends, generally throughout the week, boat traffic has really picked up, and a lot of folks like to drive in boats when they shouldn't be driving them. So, thank you.
And we've actually had wildlife train 12 of our officers so far. And like I said, during the summertime, we have extra, like SROs and stuff that we're training up. So when I'd ask for any more manpower, just, we can reallocate some of them on the lake during the summertime.
I'd like to ask a question. You said this boat's going on Baden instead of Tillery?
Yes, sir, because Alcoa is paying $30,000 of it.
I thought maybe there's more activity on Tillery.
Well, we're going to be moving the other boat to, they'll both go to both lakes. Someday, you'll see both on the lake. But since Alcoa, well, whatever it is, now Cube or...
Right.
Is paying it, we're going to, you know, keep it up there majority of the time. They also pay us manpower. So do it.
Thank you, Ashley. Item number six, Selco Partnership with Verizon Wireless requesting telecommunications tower overlay district. Presenter Bob Rimsburg, planning director. Bob?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've been advised by my business attorney who's present today, speaking in opposition to the cell tower, to recuse myself. I ask the board approve my recusal from a vote on item number six.
Okay, board, what's, you heard the request, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion to excuse Mr. Alman from vote.
Motion by Commissioner Farr, second by Vice Chairman Jordan. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. You say no?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries, five to one. Okay, Mr. Rimsburg.
Well, good evening, board. Good to see you, Mr. Chairman, and board members. As you know, we have before us a request to rezone or actually apply the telecommunications tower overlay district to 10,000 square foot portion of Mr. Charlie Hinson Jr.'s property on McCluster Road. This would be for the construction of a 195-foot-tall monopole tower. You received your memorandum from Dr. Ekman with the Stanley County Planning Board. The property there is zoned RA, residential agriculture. No primary use on this particular property. Mr. Hinson's house is adjacent to this on a separate parcel, contains both wooded and open land. Selco, the company involved, has submitted all necessary paperwork in order to meet the requirements of the tower overlay district, including fall zone, setback dimensions, and of course, as you know, vegetative buffers required where existing vegetation's not sufficient. Access to the site will be from McCluster Road. Planning Board did meet on March 9th to consider this request. Victoria Farmer, who is here tonight, is the representative for Verizon, indicated that were no towers nearby that were available for co-location. Documentation for Verizon engineers was available that stated this. However, there was some concern with propagation and coverage maps that showed a gap in the service but did not account for a tower that's located in Frog Pond, just west of Pleasant Grove Baptist Church, off Newsome Road, on the Frog Pond Road there. Ms. Farmer didn't have any information on that existing tower, and neighbors indicated no issue with cell service in the area. Other than the Frog Pond Tower, other existing towers are far enough away to justify the placement of an additional tower. The maps showing both existing and proposed coverage were included in your packet, and I'd be showing them to you now, but our computer system is not operable tonight. Because of incomplete information concerning the existing Frog Pond Tower, the Planning Board voted to defeat the motion to recommend approval to the board. Commissioners buy a vote of four to three. In retrospect, the Planning Board could have asked for the maker of the motion to withdraw the motion and change this motion to table action until further information was made available, but that was not what happened, so that brings us to tonight. The neighbors, and of course, many are present tonight, had found information on the internet and expressed concerns over RF radiation and other health concerns, which, based on the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, cannot be considered a factor by local governments in considering the location of a tower. Ms. Farmer provided information that the risks associated with cell tower transmissions and RF radiations are very much below the maximum allowed by FCC regulations. Dr. Ekman goes further and says, further research following the Planning Board meeting has revealed that, based on North Carolina General Statute 160D-933, a local government is limited in what it may consider in the placement or construction of telecommunications towers. Local government may consider aesthetics, landscaping, and land use-based location priorities, structural design, setbacks, and fall zones. Basically, if the tower meets the ordinance requirements for landscaping and pole type, meets the goals of the land use plan, meets setbacks and fall zone requirements, fills a gap in the service area, and the company indicates that no co-location is available, it must be approved by the local government. The tower appears to meet all requirements of the Stanley County zoning ordinance, including being located away from road right-ofways, which is one of the requirements. Ms. Farmer has provided subsequent information which states that the Frog Pond Tower is full, and service cannot be expanded at this existing facility. She has also shared that maintenance work, because this was a question that came up in the meeting, on cell towers occurs during daylight hours, and for safety reason, night repairs only occur in the case of an extreme emergency situation. Minutes from the meeting will show that there was some discussion about the propagation of towers. Ms. Farmer was clear in sharing that as cellphone and other wireless communications use and speed of service grows, additional towers will be needed to fill gaps in service by Verizon, as well as other providers. As a location expert, she emphasized that telecommunications companies prefer to co-locate or upgrade on existing towers and other infrastructure as much as feasible. The proposed tower will not generate, as you can imagine, significant traffic on McCluster Road. There is just outside of the Red Cross jurisdiction and, of course, nearby to Highway 2427 and Liberty Hill Church Road. We did provide you, of course, with additional information, including information from the land use law in North Carolina and the general statute that's involved. But I will open... But I will open to any questions that you may have concerning the Planning Board report.
Any questions to Mr. Bob? I believe you're gonna get questioned, Bob. I do need to, we're gonna have a public hearing. And I'll declare that the public hearing is open. And I'm going to ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this cell tower. Please come forward, state your name, tell us your address, and hold your comments to three minutes or less. Are you coming to speak for? Okay. Welcome.
I'm Charlie Henson at 16271 McLester Road. I am the property owner. Verizon contacted me about a year ago about the location that was needed. After careful consideration and research, I agreed to allow them to build a cell tower. I was able to choose the location where the tower was to be built, which places it far from anyone's home. I based my decision on my research and experience. I have a two-year degree in electronics and over 30 years' experience in radio and TV system and other electronic equipment. The cellphone we all have is a small version of the cell tower itself, transmitting probably no more than one watt of RF energy. Because the cellphone power is so low, so it's protective when using it, cell towers must be close by us to receive its signal. With towers spaced from five to 10 miles apart, their power output is usually about 10 watts to prevent interference with other towers, even though the FCC rules allow them up to as much as 500 watts of power output. If I thought for a minute that the tower was a high risk to anyone, I would never have allowed it to be built on my property, especially with my wife and me being the closest family to it. The tower location is in a wooded area, at least 1,000 to 1,500 feet from anyone's home, and a quarter mile from any highway. All a cell tower does is stand silently. It does not emit squeals or squalls or grunts and noise 24/7, nor does it release foul odors 365 days a year like a chicken house or turkey house or hog pens do. A tower does not bring in unsightly and sometimes unwanted folks into the neighborhood like a trailer park might. Some have expressed the fear that radiation cell towers causes cancer. There is no proof of this, and if that were true, people everywhere across the country would be at risk. To contrary, high doses of radiation are actually used to treat cancer. I might add that anyone can easily find whatever they want on the Internet to support their opinions, but that does not mean there is scientific proof of or evidence that such information is anywhere near true or correct. If tables were turned and those who are opposing the tower were permitted from using their land for the purpose they wanted, I wonder how they would feel and what their reaction would be, I mean prohibited from using their land. I paid full taxes on my property, have never been late. I should be allowed to use it as I see fit, just as everyone else here does theirs. I respectfully request that you grant me my right to be a full-fledged property owner and use my land to my advantage, just like everyone else does, when doing so offers no antagonism, no threat, and no harm to anyone. Just because someone thinks the tower might be unsightly or is not needed is no reason to deprive me of my rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Anyone else here to speak in favor of the cell tower? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, state your name, and if you're here representing someone, who you're representing.
Thank you. My name is Victoria Farmer, and I'm here to represent Verizon Wireless in their application. I appreciate the county commissioners allowing me a moment to speak first. I am a zoning specialist. I'm from the Chattanooga area. I've been in the telecom industry for over 25 years in a variety of roles in a variety of locations. The purpose of this application is to address Verizon Wireless's significant need to improve their coverage, addressing customers' drop call complaints in the area specifically along Highway 24. The additional benefit to this new site is to add extra capacity, improving network speeds in this area. No other existing structures in this area meet the RF design requirements for this objective. The site as proposed meets or exceeds all federal, state, county laws and ordinances. As we are all aware, there is significant opposition from the community to the site. The concerns addressed in the previous meeting include health effects, impacts on real estate values, how the site was selected, as well as concerns regarding noise. I would like to talk about a couple of these very quickly. In terms of real estate values, one of the things folks are starting to grapple with is the fact that over a third of Americans don't have landlines anymore. We don't have payphones. We are all becoming completely dependent on the wireless technology. The National Association of Realtors has actually indicated affordable high-speed broadband becoming as important as electric and water service in terms of evaluating property. Absence of wireless service makes a community less attractive for new investment and development. There have been studies to demonstrate communities with access to broadband have had a higher property value than those who do not. The vice president herself visited Charlotte today and spoke of the need for improving Internet and phone services in our rural areas. A few examples of the potential economic impact of the new generation of wireless. It energizes management, safety, and security, chore automation, automated checkouts are plentiful, inventory control, usage based on design of appliances, for vehicles, conditional based maintenance, reduced insurance, and navigation. In selecting a site, we have to stay within a very narrow defined area that through analysis is called a network search ring. A thorough study of all the properties within this search ring provides the locations that actually affords Verizon and future carriers the greater opportunity to maximize potential for providing coverage for their customers. But beyond that, a strategically located, environmentally appropriate site not only improves coverage for the community, but will also meet important goals for the public like safety and improved communications. During the pandemic, we found necessary communication infrastructure or telemedicine helps patients connect with their healthcare providers. Verizon unveiled Blue Gene Telehealth this month. This is a way for providers and patients to conduct data-driven vertical care conversations.
Ms. Farmer, I hate to interrupt you, but you're over three minutes.
Am I?
I'm gonna give you 30 more seconds.
Okay. Well, then finally, just to achieve the coverage and capacity referred delivers a fully connected network, there is a federal mandate for all wireless providers to deploy as necessary new sites and have them optimized within a timeline designated by the FCC. This has been designed to accommodate, this site has been designed to accommodate four arrays, room enough for future co-location by other providers, as well as a potential need for local emergency equipment. Yes, do you have any more, any questions for me?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I'd like to call on Chris. First of all, is there anyone else here to speak for the cell tower? I'm gonna start calling on people that are gonna speak against, I believe. Chris Dugan?
Dugan.
Dugan. Hello.
Chairman, commissioners, I appreciate the time here. I'll be as quick in my three minutes and start my timer. There's a lot of stuff to go over here. How many folks in the room are here in opposition to the tower? And to be fair, how many here in favor of the tower? And I say that to you all because you are not a rubber stamp for the Verizon. Your job as legislators is to listen to your constituents. And in fact, the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is what our circuit falls in under AT&amp;T Wireless versus City of Council of Virginia Beach, says in no uncertain terms, "It is not only proper, but even expected that the legislature and its members will consider the views of their constituents to be particularly compelling forms of evidence in zoning, as in all other legislative matters. These views, if widely shared, trump those bureaucrats and experts in the minds of reasonable legislatures." I say that to you because you're not a rubber stamp. Verizon, in reading the telecommunications towers portions here under the UDO, these regulations are in place in order to provide an adequate level of service to his customers, an adequate level of service to his customers. You have maps there, and we have submitted, or my clients have submitted, a memorandum with exhibits. I believe all of you have received a copy of that. I'm gonna leave a copy of the memo and the exhibits to be placed into record. But you'll see in that, the thing that came out most to me was this Verizon area coverage. And I've got a map for each one of you to show you the Verizon coverage in that area off the Verizon Maps website. This says that they have 5G nationwide. What gap is there? They haven't proved the gap. They need to prove that gap. They have not demonstrated that there's a need for it. There's no drop call data. We don't have that from Verizon. They can simply click and tell you how many drop calls are in the area from their customers. We have no ride-along data. We have nobody here from EMS or emergency response to tell us that there is a problem with their drop calls. What is the need for this tower? They haven't said it. What they want is they want to improve the bottom line. And I'm moving quickly here, so please forgive me. What we haven't heard, or what you're gonna hear from the residents as part of the memorandum and their letters, is the aesthetics. And you can listen to that. That's part of it. But what's more important here is you have letters from at least seven reputable real estate agents in the area to say that there's at least a 15% to 20% impact on property values, not only on the property values themselves, but on the fact that there are people that I just don't want to buy near there. You're losing your customer base. You're losing the people that are gonna do it. So you have a negative impact. And that is one of the express reasons why you can, as this council can deny. A telecommunications tower overlay district request can be denied on the basis of negative influence on property values. There's been nothing to demonstrate otherwise. Those in opposition have met their burden, what they're required to do. They have shown you that there is a negative impact. And my three minutes are up. My hope was to get as much...
You've got 30 more seconds.
All right. So what I would ask for this commission to do is to deny the application based upon the lack of sufficient evidence in the record to demonstrate a need by Verizon for the site, to demonstrate that there is a negative financial impact on the neighboring property owners based upon the adjacent letters of the property owners, that their aesthetics, I believe, are impacted. And we request that this commission deny the application of Verizon based upon their failure to meet their burden to demonstrate approval. Thank you.
Thank you. When I call on Mason Henson, you would come up, tell us if you're for or against. And you have three minutes to make comments.
Mason Henson, 16220 Liberty Hill Church Road. I am completely against, and it is not a chicken shack. Okay, as far as the coverage, yeah. I mean, you got a whole room full of people right here who live in this area, are up and down, in and out. I mean, just in the time it took me to go around and talk to the neighbors, because I had to inform them, because we didn't find out about this till the last minute. Had I not informed many of them, they would have never known because this just came, would have been slipped right under the radar. But there have, yeah, never been a drop call, never even a lack in coverage. If anything, we have extremely good coverage in our area. And the people who live in this area are either the people like myself who inherited this property over many generations. I mean, it means everything to us. And the other people who moved to this area, it's because of that scenic view, because of the property itself and the way it is now. That's what draws them here. And you'll see that in the letters they wrote. But I'm also, it's just, it's totally out of proportion with the natural environment. And the machinery used does make noise. Those generators are gonna introduce a lot of unwanted noise. I mean, that area is quiet. You can hear a pin drop. All you hear out there is nature. And this proximity to the cell tower is 100 feet from my property line. So it's pretty much as close as you can get without putting it directly on my property. And that cell tower's 195 feet, plus a little. So if the fall zone for it is 100 feet, that concerns me too, because I've seen nothing but videos and pictures of these things falling, and they do not collapse in on themselves. When they fall, it falls like standing timber. And 100 feet away, that's gonna land either on my property, Wallace's property, or his property. And also, I wasn't aware of how often they catch fire. It's once a month they catch fire, and those things go up like a torch. So there's that, too. I mean, I don't want anything that presents any kind of danger whatsoever that close to my property or my family. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you for coming and speaking. I'd like to call David Wallace. Welcome, David.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is David Wallace. I live on 161958 McLester Road. My property abuts Charlie Henson's property. The tower, the proposed tower, is 100 feet from my property boundary. However, tonight I'd like to pose several rhetorical questions as to how many cell towers are enough, okay? Does Stanley County have any guidance on the number of cell towers they plan to install throughout the county? Do any guidance on the level of visual pollution to be inflicted upon the landscape of this beautiful county? And as one drives around the area, you can see cell towers here and there poking through the skyline. But what are typical cell tower spacing needs? I did some research on that particular question. And one person I found is Brigham Young, Brigham Young University Electrical Engineer, researcher. And he actually talked about, in practice, cell towers are grouped in densely populated regions to better cater to most of their company's subscribers. Cellular traffic through a single site is limited by the base station's capacity. Now, in suburban areas, cell towers are commonly spaced about one or two miles apart. Now, really dense metropolitan areas like New York, for example, towers may be as close as a quarter to half a mile. Now, similarly, the range varies with terrain. For a flat terrain, for example, out in the prairies, 30 to 45 miles. On the other hand, when the terrain is hilly, the working range can drastically shrink to as low as three to five miles. And I've described Stanley County as hilly. Another person I found on the web, Mr. Cleven Klein Smith, Director of Engineering at a rural cellular carrier, has 16 years of experience in the cell business. He indicated that it depends, the spacing depends on the morphology and population density. On average, you typically see half to two-mile radius in urban areas, 1.8 to three-mile radius in suburban areas, and three to 12 miles in rural areas, which is what we are out here in Stanley County. Now, what's the average spacing of cell towers in West Stanley County? I reviewed a Federal Communications Commission website, and they have a map on that website that shows all FCC-approved cell towers throughout the United States. Not all towers, just FCC-approved towers. So I took a portion of that map, 166 square miles, ranges from about four miles west of Locust to two miles east of Andy, and about five miles north of Locust and five miles south. So it covers our area. There are a total of 13 cell towers in that area. And the spacing, then I calculated the spacings between each pair of cell towers. And they... And the average spacing on those cell towers is 3.16 miles, which is the low end of the ranges quoted by researchers that I had mentioned earlier. We are actually at the limit, typical lower ledge of the limit for cell tower spacings. Now, I would describe Stanley County as having hilly terrain, like I said earlier. So therefore, our range should be no, should be about three to five miles. And we are actually now today at 3.16 mile spacings between our cell towers. So how many more of these cell towers are we going to put up?
Mr. Wallace, if you would, wrap it up.
Okay.
You've got 30 more seconds.
Okay. So basically, does Stanley County plan to just keep adding cell towers whenever your property owners want a bit of extra cash? Or does the county have a policy on cell tower spacing? We are ready, like I said earlier, on the lower end of that range. I personally want us, do not want us to start looking like Charlotte with cell towers every mile that you drive around the county. It's one of the reasons I live out here. Took me quite a few years to find this location, and it's a beautiful county, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you, gentlemen, for your consideration.
Thank you. Ask Buddy Feis to come up and speak.
Buddy Feis, 16398 Liberty Hill Church Road. I took it upon myself to draw a little map here, in the center of which is this proposed cellphone tower location, draw in all the property owners that surround it, and go to them one by one and see what their thoughts were. I don't know whether you've seen this map or not. All this area colored in yellow are people who are opposed to this cellphone tower. The only people that aren't colored in are people that are elderly and unable to really make any decision one way or the other. They're just not able to. My big thing with it, also, I went around, and right here I've got 110 signatures of people that don't want this in their neighborhood. And I'm willing to share any of this if I need. I don't know what y'all have in your hands.
I think we have that, sir.
Okay. And basically, aesthetics is our big thing, our property values is a big thing, and also that what we're not allowed to discuss is a big thing. We just, our coverage is adequate. We've had no problems. We would just rather it not be in our neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Feis.
Good evening. Andy Henson, 16232 Liberty Hill Church Road. I share the concerns of everyone who's spoken tonight. Before I begin with those concerns, I'd like to draw your attention back to the propagation maps that they submitted previously, which you've all seen. Within the proposed gap, they intentionally left out the Frog Pond Tower, which they say they cannot use. They also said that they would not accept it because there was no spot available except one at 150 feet, and they would not accept anything that was less than 190 feet. Stanley County does not approve anything above 195 feet. So by that statement, they refuse to co-locate with any available location. We've actually found another available location, three miles from there, Hattley Burris Road, completely unoccupied monopole tower already built, in the direction they claim to need service, northward closer to Highway 2427. It is available for leasing. And again, Verizon has supplied us with another map. Complete coverage, absolutely the entire area. So two maps, somebody's lying, either it's Verizon or it's Verizon. This map says they have coverage. Their map, which is meaningless essentially, says that they don't. There's no hard data supporting it. They didn't do a network drive test. They could have drove through the area and have that done. It's easy for them to do. We did our drive test. We drove through the area, as we have for years. But recently, we've made sure, drive through there, no drop calls anywhere. Is there any record of those drop calls they've mentioned? So if they have provided no hard data, they've provided not a shred of probative evidence. Might as well be written in Sanskrit for all the use it is to anybody. How is anyone even supposed to interpret it? They simply say, "This is what we need. This is what this means," and there's no hard data at all. So any of their resident experts are basically paid Verizon employees, which again makes it meaningless. Verizon's paying somebody to say, "This is what Verizon needs, this is what they've told you." So the burden is on them to provide that, to provide the need, and they haven't. Even though they've tried to convince you, they don't have that burden. The burden on us is to provide the negative aesthetic aspect and the negative property depreciation, which we have provided. I have multiple Realtors, as well as we've supplied another one that you haven't seen, Russ Hollands. Century 21 has written a powerful letter, well-known in the community. Their opinion, as far as I'm concerned, is valuable above that of appraisers. They have the experience. They understand when there's a, when people don't want to buy a cell tower, they've had that experience. They understand when people turn it down. I had one of them tell me 50% of the people, of our clients, tell them, she would, told her they would not accept a tower anywhere close to a property that was, that they were considering to buy. And there also is the public safety issue with the fall zone. They say that it collapses straight downward. Watch any video-
Mr. Henson, your past three minutes give you 30 more seconds to wrap it up.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Any video will show it collapsing. There's not a video that shows it falling straight down. They catch fire, they're built so fast, they put them up in a matter of weeks, they catch fire constantly. If it falls, it's going to fall on our property. The woods I have, that I value, will catch fire. It's far too likely. Thank you for your time. I hope you could consider everything. There is no need for it here. We are all opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've called on everyone on this list. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak for or against? Please come forward. Don't see anyone, so I'm going to, wait just a second. Yeah. You're right, I don't need to close. Yes, go ahead.
What I'd like to do is make a motion. Due to the fact that since the planning board meeting, new and more detailed information has come in from both Selco partnership with Verizon Wireless and those in opposition to the request to telecommunications tower overlay district, I move that we remand this application to the planning board for further review, consideration, and recommendation. Additionally, I move that the public hearing remain open and continue at our next regular meeting on Monday, May 17, 2021, at 6:00 PM here in the Gene McIntyre Meeting Room. The planning board's next meeting is May 10, 2021, at 6:30 PM.
You hear, you're making that as a motion, Commissioners Utah? Is there a second? Second, but Commissioner Farr. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor of leaving the public hearing open and not to go back to the planning board to meet and talk about this new information that's been submitted? And then we'll take it up on the meeting of May the 17th at 6:00 PM here in the Gene McIntyre Meeting Room. All in favor of that, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Two noes? You can't vote. Three, four ayes, motion carries 4 to 2. Next on the agenda is Item 7, Amendment to the Land Use Ordinance based on NCGS 160D. Presenter Bob Rimsberg, Planning Director.
Thank you, Board. It's good to be back before you. Maybe a little bit simpler thing, but not really simpler. It took a lot of work to get to this point, and of course, you've already held the public hearing concerning 160D amendments to the ordinance, and it stands before you as recommended. And of course, Ms. Emrich and I are here as, having rewritten a lot of that and been putting things in, hopefully in some semblance of order, but here to answer any questions that you may have regarding that, but obviously seeking your approval of the amended land use plans, or land use ordinances, excuse me. So you have both the, you have the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the minimum housing code, and, I'm going to get it wrong, which is the other one? Which one?
Subdivision.
Yes, what, yeah, subdivision ordinance, right. So-
Any questions of Bob Rimsberg? I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Because I'm taking that you've read every word of this. What item in that book might keep you awake at night?
Want me to re- There's still, well, there are numerous things that I think still need to be updated in there as far, and not related to the 160D. We are, I guess I'll say one, and I'll look at Mr. Effer, because I know he's faced the same thing, and that's the sign ordinance. There was some federal case a few years ago that meant, well, it made our ordinance a bit out of date. So there's something else we've got to work on and adopt. I rewrote some of this a couple of years ago with the sign ordinance, and it actually, that language got adopted by the town of Norwood and by the town of Red Cross. But we haven't done it yet as a county. That's something still before us. And I'll mention this, because it'll come before you in a couple of, maybe sooner than later, and that is the Airport Authority has requested that we rewrite, and we have rewritten, the airport overlay district language and updated that. So that's a whole section that'll come out of this new, what you may be approving tonight, and we'll take that out and put a whole new section in. So the thing about a land use ordinance like the zoning ordinance, it's always going to be in flux. And maybe that's what keeps me up at night, is that you're always looking at it and potentially tweaking it or changing it. And when you have an issue that keeps coming back to you, then that's, you know, those are parts that you need to look closest at. You may need to, if everyone wants to build a campground, then maybe we need to look at the campground ordinance if they're not allowed. Should we be allowing that? Or mobile home. Years ago, the county dealt with mobile home ordinance and walked through that, and it was a very difficult time, but they figured out what was best for the community. But that, I guess, a short answer. That's a long answer to your question. That's what keeps me up. There's always something to be changed.
Next question. Are these changes North Carolina state changes, or are they changes that you all want to make?
Short answer is they're North Carolina state changes. The State General Assembly in 2019 adopted significant changes to the general statute 153A that affected the land use, and of course, also the corresponding municipal statutes, and merged them together to make 160D. So the short answer is, the legislature caused the change. There are a few changes in there as we went through that we thought we needed to eliminate or change or update, partly to bring it up to date with some case law and other things that we caught that were easy, easy, basic changes. But in general, 90%, 95% of what's there are changes that were required because of 160D, as we call it, the statute changes at the general assembly level.
Hypothetical, what if we didn't approve this thing by July 1st? What's going to happen?
Nothing happens until, what, you mean after July 1st? Oh, after July 1st. The jury might be out on that. We may have to talk to Ms. Farr, our attorney, about that. But the basic sort of thing is zoning may go away, because you suddenly wouldn't have a zoning ordinance that was enforceable. So not that, you know, not that it doesn't necessarily vanish, but you might not win a court case if you had to, because your ordinance was out of date and behind. It would not necessarily have the effect that it should have.
So it's kind of like the state's requiring this.
It, yeah. And so our time limit's running out as of July 1st.
Okay. Questions, comments? What's the Board, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Vice Chairman.
One I'd like to thank Commissioner Barbie for our last meeting, for asking tables so we could read this. Number two, anybody that needs sleeping aids, please pick up a copy at the front desk. We did get the opportunity, pleasure, to go through this 255 pages. I myself looked through it, a lot of minor questions, but nothing that made me lose sleep at night. I would like to make a motion to approve the amendments as submitted to the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the minimum housing and high grass standards ordinance, and the flood damage control ordinance to meet the requirements created by the new statutory language found in NCGS 160D. The new language meets the requirement of the new 160D statutes and makes technical corrections and updates to our existing ordinances.
Do we have a motion to approve these changes? Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Effer, seconded motion. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the counties is 253, and the city of Locust is 243, and I've read every word on every page, and it does keep you up at night.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's vote. All in favor of this change? I'm going to ask that we raise our right hand. Get Scott to help you. There you go. We got a 7-0. It passed.
I'd like to note that the motion was as wordy as the book was.
And Bob, I don't know if you have someone in your office that reads the ordinances from time to time and kind of makes some suggestions, but I hope we do.
We do.
Okay.
Bailey, myself, and Tim Swerch, and all three of us kind of keep an eye on things. And again, some things come up in the community, so we quickly will, we make amendments, and as we said, there may be some things that we find that we need to tweak as we go along. It's always part of an ordinance.
You tweak them and bring them to us, and we'll look at them. Number eight on the agenda is the National Day of Prayer proclamation. And we've been approving this type proclamation as long as I've been on this board, which is, I think I'm in my seventh year, I think, runs together. But as of May the 6th, 2021, marks the 70th consecutive observance of National Day of Prayer, as mandated by both Congress and by our President. And whereas "Lord pours out your love, life, and liberty" is the theme for the 2021 National Day of Prayer. Whereas leaders of our nation and our Stanley County community have relied upon the power of prayer throughout our history, and now therefore we, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, May the 6th, 2021, as the Day of Prayer in Stanley County, North Carolina, and urges our citizens to join together in their homes, places of work, places of worship, to pray for the unity of the hearts of all mankind, and to continue in prayer for Stanley County and our state and our nation. This is the proclamation that I'm asking the Board to approve, and if we, as a county, as a state, as a nation, need prayer- as a state, as a nation, need prayer, now is the time, that's for sure, because we are one divided country. So if, I'm seeking a motion that we approve, May the 6th is the National Day of Prayer.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Okay. Mr. Barbie, Commissioner Barbie, Commissioner Almond, second in the motion. Any other comments, discussion before we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, the city of Locust will be having a National Day of Prayer service on May the 6th. That's a Thursday at 12:00 noon in front of the government center.
I'm taking that that you're inviting all the commissioners up here to attend.
Yes, sir.
Or any citizen that's interested.
Anyone that's interested.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number nine, Gaston County Action Board of Directors', appointments. County Commissioner Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Gaston County, or Gaston Community Action, they've requested the appointment of a, for a three-year term of an official for Stanley County. Ms. DeLois Chambers previously served in this position, and she's ineligible due to having served multiple terms. Attached, there's some information about the Gaston Community Action Group, mission, vision, and Board of Directors'. There's one volunteer application, Ms. Michelle Parker, for the board's consideration to this group. This group really is a sort of a community development action group. They get funding for energy assistance, doing weatherization for homes, and so, you know, these folks can go there and apply. Actually have an office off of Old Charlotte, sort of between Old Charlotte, between First Street and 52, is where their office is located. Anyway, be more than happy to answer any other questions regarding this group.
Any questions? County Manager Lucas. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman. I'm with the motion. We request the board appoint Michelle Parker to the, as a public official to represent Stanley County on the Gaston Community Action Board, on Board of Directors for a three-year term, expiring April 18th, 2024.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Farr. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. County Manager Lucas, go again, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The next item are actually two resolutions that we're asking the board to take action on this evening. These resolutions are in support of federal earmarks that we submitted to Congressman Hudson's office on Friday. Myself and Sandy Selvi received a call the Thursday before Easter, before Good Friday, the Good Friday holidays, saying that they were going to have this process by which they were going to take projects from local communities, both from government and nonprofits, and we actually had two weeks to put this stuff together. And so we actually submitted two projects. One was the West Stanley Wastewater Treatment Plant project, and the other was an airport improvement project, and there's some information about those in the resolutions. We have, the funding, if approved, would have to be spent in the congressional, federal fiscal year of 2022, which would, which, you know, does commence on October 1st of 2021 and would end on September 30th of 2022. So we put in some funding, a refunding request for the West Stanley Wastewater Treatment Plant for the engineering of that because we knew that we could get that spent in that time period, to take that from 1.2 million gallons a day to 2.5 million gallons a day. And then we also submitted for a project at the airport, which would create basically a taxi lane to connect the taxiway to the area that we're proposing for some additional corporate hangars and additional hanger space out at the airport. And that was a $1.9 million project, and I think the, we requested 1.5 million for the West Stanley project. I know the city of Albemarle also submitted a request through Congressman Hudson's office for assistance with their Long Creek Sewer Treatment Plant rehabilitation. We, they're only, the congressman's only going to submit a one for each county and two wild cards, from my understanding. So, you know, there's no guarantee that at least one of the projects we submitted will get submitted by him, possibly two if he chooses a wild, one of ours is a wild card, but all three of them won't, we know, won't get submitted well, unless both of our projects were considered wild cards. So, and then there's no guarantee that those are going to get funded. So this is really just, we felt like we needed to go through the process and get it in there so we could be considered, because we can guarantee that we weren't going to get any funding if we didn't submit anything. So we worked diligently over that week and a half period and made that submission, but these are letters, are resolutions of support from you to know that, hey, we do support these earmark requests. So we're asking you for that consideration this evening so we can follow up with them and submit these resolutions tomorrow morning. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Don't believe we got any questions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Farr.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the support resolutions for the county's federal community project funding request.
Do we have a second? Second by Vice Chairman Jordan. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Just a minute. That's, that's all right.
Item number?
Item number 12. 11, thank you. Item number 11 is a proclamation for apraxia awareness day, and I'm going to be honest with you all, I didn't know what this was until I read about it. But I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Jordan to read this proclamation.
Ask the guy that stutters to read, just to read a proclamation about a speech impediment. I'm just saying. Certain kind of irony there. Whereas May 14th marks Childhood Apraxia of Speech Day, during which, whereas we raise throughout Stanley County, you can see about childhood apraxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech order that affects one in 1,000 children, and whereas childhood apraxia of speech, or CAS, causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children, and whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, myself excluded, those with the apraxia require early, appropriate, and intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn to speak. And whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with the apraxia will have diminished communication skills, but are also placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. I need Dolly for this. And whereas such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing to citizens if not resolved or improved, and whereas public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in Stanley County, NC, is essential for families of children with this neurological disorder and the professionals who support them to achieve the needed services for those who learn to use their own voice, and whereas the highest respect goes to those children as does their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that May 14th is Apraxia Awareness Day, and citizens of Stanley County, NC, and surrounding areas are encouraged to work within their communities to increase the awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech, and for more information, visit apraxia-kids.org.
I asked the board, would we make a motion that we adopt May the 14th and approve this proclamation?
Seven.
Be Commissioner Almond, second by Commissioner Ashutah. Any other discussion about it? All in favor of this, May the 14th, Apraxia Awareness Day, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Brings us to the consent agenda. I know everybody's had time to look at it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ashutah, a second by Commissioner Barbie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries 7-0. Board comments or announcements, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Ashutah.
Two quick things, and I should have explained my, my draft, what, the resolution I made about the, of the cell tower. You know, normally, I tend to support what our boards recommend, and in that case, at the, at the last planning and zoning meeting, it was a 4-3 vote, I believe, against, but they had questions and they needed more information from Verizon to, you know, they asked for more information from Verizon, and I felt it was only fair for Verizon to go back to the, to the board with that information, let the board decide again. And secondly, and I'm trying to look for the numbers, the trash pickup, there's been people picking up litter in Stanley County to Keep Stanley Beautiful, and I believe their last one is going to be this weekend. They've had two, and I know the first weekend, they, I think they picked up 35 bags, and I don't know if y'all got the number of what they picked up this time, but 50, so, so let's all do a push and try to get out there to Rock Creek Park, I believe, at 8:45 Saturday morning, pick up trash in Stanley County. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Effer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did mention the National Day of Prayer on May the 6th, love for everyone to come out, and also Friday, May the 7th, from 11:30 to 1:00, the Rite of Pride trucks, they make their loop through Stanley County supporting our veterans. They will be in Locust from 11:30 to 1:00, there in front of the town center. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbie?
Yeah, I'd like to make references to my vote or no, going back to the planning zoning board. I'm sure Selco, this is not their first rodeo, and they should have been prepared with their answers and everything, and I think it's just prolonging things to go back to the planning board, but it passed, and so we'll see what results will be later.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Ashutah, for bringing this up. Yeah, to Keep Stanley Beautiful, Lee Snuggs, I wish he was here tonight. I was able to participate the weekend of the 10th, I think the first weekend. I had to do something for the Republican Party last weekend, and I'll be on the Kerry, Effer ride coming up this weekend, but I was able to participate, one of the three. I tell you what, that'll wear you out. I'm a healthy dude, but man, I went home and took me a nap, but I thought that we did good that day until I was leaving to go out of town for my, my appointment on Saturday, and they happened to be starting at the road near my house. So thank you again for that. But, I mean, all the way down towards 73, I mean, down 73 towards 52, up on 24, 27, beside 52, there was just orange bags everywhere, and the highway looks great. So Lee Snuggs and the people at Keep Stanley Beautiful, Pat Bremmott and those guys, thank you so much. I cannot be there this Saturday to join you, but I'd like to say I'll be with you in spirit, but no, I'll be on a motorcycle. But I will try to help send more people your way. My other note, today is a neat day in history. I don't know if you guys follow tech news, but I tend to. 117 years ago, we put the first plane in the air. Today, 117 years later, we flew the first helicopter on an alien planet. NASA powered a helicopter off the ground in Mars, took it up in the air for 10 feet for 39 seconds, spun it around a circle a minute, thought about it, went, all right, that worked, set it back down. That is the coolest thing. And if you don't know it, they took a piece of the original right flyer and attached it to the bottom of the helicopter. So there's a small part of our first manned flight attached to the helicopter that is part of our first unmanned flight on a foreign planet. That was pretty cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Very interesting. Commissioner Almond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Saturday, I'm planning to attend Mr. Snuggs' pickup also, and I'd like to thank all those who were helping Saturday at the Ag Center for the recycling event.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr?
No comment.
And I want to mention the Kerry D. Effer Motorcycle Ride that's been referred to several times, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Effer, if you're going to ride a motorcycle to Ashboro, what time do they leave? 10 o'clock?
Registration starts at 9:00, and we leave at 10:00.
Okay. So I encourage anybody that has a motorcycle to come out to West Stanley and participate in, in this event. They should get back, what, around 1:30?
Yeah, a little after 1:00, so if you don't have a motorcycle and would like to participate, best time to come is probably around 11:00 or so. If you want to see us leave, of course, but be there at 10:00, but if you want something to eat while we're not there, you know, around 11:00, 11:30, best time to come, grab you a barbecue dinner.
And donations are appreciated to the foundation of Kerry D. Effer. Scholarships are given every year to West Stanley students, to a number of West Stanley students, and this has been going on for how many years?
22.
22 years.
We will surpass $100,000 this year for scholarships to seniors at West Stanley.
And that's a great memorial for your daughter, Kerry, Kerry D. Effer, and I applaud you and Tracy for doing this and keeping things going.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Offer still ride for you to ride on the back with me if you want to get up front?
I'll take you too. I mean, come on.
Lane, I was planning to do that until my wife told me I couldn't, but she did tell me I could pick up trash Saturday morning unless it's raining, so.
Now, if you change your mind, offer still there, you can ride on the back.
Have you got a sidecar? I believe I'll pass this year, but maybe next year. All right. County Manager Lucas, do you have anything for us? Okay. And we appreciate you, and we appreciate Attorney Farr, and we appreciate our clerk, Tyler Bremmott, thank you for what you do. We're not going to need a motion to adjourn, we're going to recess until tomorrow.
We have to close session first.
Oh, yeah. We sure do. Forget about what I just said. And we do need a motion to go into closed session to discuss business.
Economic development.
Economic development. First and the second. All in favor, say aye. Let's go into closed session.